Good morning, welcome Commissioners Court, regular session November fourth. We have a quorum present with Commissioner Kirk and the absent, here you serve by meeting was probably posted. If you'll please rise for prayer and pledge your name, Judge.
Our heavenly Father, we call briefly asking your attendance to Commissioners Court this morning. Father, I thank you through these commissioners and the judge and the service that they provide for Walker County Res. Father, we're thankful for their lives and their willingness to serve. Father, our Bible verse this morning comes from Second Chronicles, chapter seven and verse fourteen. If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land. Father, our land needs standing in its state, needing healing. Father, we pray for the elections this coming Tuesday. Father, may you, may your will be done this today and we ask, Lord, that we remember to humble ourselves and we'll seek your face. That you may heal our land. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to share your word with those in attendance this morning. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We have two citizens input, Ms. Rigsby.
Which one she's on?
Three and four.
Good morning.
For this reason.
Your Honor, again for the record, I stand before you and I just state that God is faithful to his promise. I ask that you just pay careful review on items that you sign off on. I know there are times things have gone overlooked, but God has assured me that he has heard me. I've been bringing things to the attention of this court for some years. He gave me a small inkling that he heard. I say that the whole CPS board had fallen asleep at the wheel. There had been no activity, I know since twenty twenty, only for being a farmer since twenty eighteen. And it's gotten the attention now of the program director and it followed them to this court. The most vulnerable citizens have been overlooked. And over eighty-five percent of those cases come out of precinct three. It's no secret, I've spoken publicly before about it. And yet so many funds have come through when we have children that are poor. That gets overlooked, someone has to be their voice. And I had brought it to the attention of the board that they were being overlooked. I say that, I'm raising one missus that hadn't had, I bought her clothing, but hadn't had a voucher from CPS since twenty eighteen. That should get somebody's attention with this treasurer's report noticing that nothing was being done on their behalf. And some does take for someone to really hear. So I ask that you not be cavalier or dismissive. I'm here to gain your support in behalf of these children. That's all I want. For them to be taken care of. And I believe Commissioner Doggett, you knew my husband, we stood up and we didn't just stand up, we took action at our own expense. But that's to the glory of God. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rigsby.
James Morrison, number four.
Good morning, gentlemen. My purpose here this morning is on behalf of my board of directors to thank you for working with us, particularly the two commissioners that we did the project with. It was a successful project, helps everybody in the long run. Cuts down on y'all's expenses, our expenses, which are always good for your constituents. I like to, like to thank y'all for, as always, for working with us. We appreciate the cooperation. We think it's a good partnership. This time I particularly like to thank your auditor's office for being so patient to let this drag on so long. We love thankful for y'all's attendance for real. I also at this time like to introduce my, my new assistant manager, Michael.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioners.
This is Michael Watson. It's no secret, you know, the gray's starting to creep in. I'm kind of on the way out. At some point, well, like we all do, Michael will be a familiar face that you'll be seeing a lot of. So just wanted to introduce you and tell you thank you again.
Yeah, the gray's creeping in on him too.
Much as this.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Consider agenda contains eighteen items.
I'll make the motion to consent agenda.
Seven and seven.
Seven and seventeen.
Second.
Moving second of all, favor raised your hand. Number seven, received EMS monthly report for September twenty twenty-four.
Rachel, would you kind of update us a little bit on that, especially the level zeros?
Chief Toman is the expert at level zero and pulled up on my phone. Oh, okay.
I tried looking at the chart last night, but it was very hard.
Maybe we can tone it down to like a quarter.
That's for one, that's for one month.
That's one month?
Yes, sir. So every
That's every day.
Every single call.
Every single call.
Yeah, the, and so every time the blue lines get above or touch the orange line, we have that is level zero. Anytime it is above, that is calls holding or times where we have no trucks available for a call.
Only when we're on level zero, how long did it take us to bounce back to under it?
That's, that's the part that's difficult to, to track down every single day. Times it's for a matter of
Minutes, five minutes.
Sometimes it could be thirty minutes to an hour. A lot of times when that fifth truck catches that call and we're at level zero, within five minutes, a truck clears from the hospital and we're out of level zero. So that's, that's the hard part is tracking the duration of the level zero.
Or have the calls, I mean, overall, over the whole year, last year, gone up from the previous year quite a bit or not?
I mean, it's pretty steady comparable to last year. It might be a little bit higher, but I know we had a really busy summer. We were super busy in August and September.
Our TDC calls, have they kind of leveled out at the Ellis form?
They're the same as they always have.
Haven't fixed themselves?
Yep. They're pretty steady month to month.
They hold our answers up anymore? Y'all kind of
So if it's at the Estelle unit, since they're a medical facility, depending on what type of call it is, calls can hold because they have a physician or first practitioner, higher level than we are. So we do let those calls hold if we have to. Yeah, we're hold those calls.
Were you referring to, do they hold our
Are they holding your truck? They're not putting a patient on it, I guess is the way I'm asking.
It's getting a little bit better than it used to be. Our relationship with the wardens is pretty good now. So if a crew does call and say, hey, we're stuck, a lot of times we can make a phone call and then within five minutes that one's on the move.
Okay, so that's getting a lot better than it was.
But we're able to mitigate it pretty quickly.
Okay, well, that's
Haven't heard of any significant problems in quite a while, actually.
Well, anything else? Y'all got anything?
I don't. Hopefully, what, a few months from putting a whole nother crew out there and hopefully that'll just push all these down, maybe a line or two.
Yeah, have y'all started the hiring process yet?
On the fifteenth is when we're going to be doing the hiring process.
And I know over the next month, to kind of speak for E S D one, they had a meeting last week and they've got a design architect on board and walk the project, I think next week, week after, to kind of get an idea of a temporary site versus the overall big picture. So I'm hoping they kind of start, they'll pick it up some momentum.
So they're, they're going to move on that new location that they actually funded, bought, right?
Oh, yeah, they've got it cleared off, surveyed and the whole show. Lucy, you have something to say over there?
Lucy got it.
Lucy's got it because Lucy was there. Martinez Architect is going to, they're talking about trying to get him out with at least two of the commissioners off the board, if not more, if so, we'll have to do a meeting. But to go walk the site and, and look at getting him ranked up on the temporary and, and stuff. So, but yeah.
All right, thank you, Lucy. Well, that's all I've got.
So on this side of the graph, it's the red lines at four, I mean, four ambulances?
So that's how many, how many times there are overlapping calls? So if it's zero, that means there's one call going on. If it's one, there are now, that's one instance of overlapping call. So that would be two. So even though we have five, the line at four is when there's five calls going on at one time.
Then we have another ambulance at red line will go to five.
Five, yeah, for six.
All right, appreciate your report. Thank you. That's all I got, Judge.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Moving second of all, favor raised your hand. Number seventeen, approve proclamation twenty twenty-five dash three, designating November fourth, twenty twenty-four as Roy Castleberry, Castleberry Day.
Thank you, Judge. I think it's kind of a special day. Anytime I donates or commits forty years of their life to serving other people, I think it's pretty important when they finally decide that it's time to move on to a retired life or wherever Mr. Castleberry is going. I think it's important we bring up and, and recognize that dedication to our community. Roach, you come forward. We have a, bring your gang up with you. Let's just bring everybody up from EMS and we'll stand them over here. Y'all showed up and get you up here too. You probably waited for all this, right? Just did the forty years so you could have the speech. Normally I read or somebody from the court reads the proclamation. Judge, I'd like the chief parlor to read this one if we could.
All right, so. Whereas we are here today to express our appreciation to paramedic Roy Castleberry to honor him for his distinguished twenty-year career with Walker County EMS. And whereas Mr. Castleberry has been serving as an EMS provider with the state of Texas for nearly four decades. And where Mr. Castleberry began his career with Walker County EMS on January seventh, two thousand and five as a paramedic and has worked under three EMS chiefs. And where, and whereas Mr. Castleberry has played an important role within Walker County EMS while advancing his career as a paramedic. His roles over the year have included paramedic in charge, field training officer and villain district chief. Whereas on behalf of Walker County, we want to express our sincere appreciation to Mr. Castleberry for his loyalty, clinical stewardship and compassion to the residents of Walker County throughout his career and wish him much happiness as he begins this exciting chapter in his life. Now, therefore, the Walker County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four as Roy Castleberry Day. And we urge all citizens and employees to join in congratulating Mr. Castleberry on an outstanding career with Walker County EMS and expressing our sincere appreciation to him for his unwavering dedication. Wish him many years of happiness.
Congratulations, sir.
You want to say anything, Ryan? You want to say anything? Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank God for allowing me the opportunity to do something I'm so passionate about. Without him, nothing happens. Second of all, give thanks to my wife and my family. Without her and my family supporting me, nothing happens. Couldn't have made it. Third, I'd like to thank all the coworkers that tolerated me and management that put up with me. And last of all, I want to thank y'all for continuing to support the county EMS. It's growing by leaps and bounds and it's doing a fine job and clinically it's second to nobody. So thank y'all too. Thank you for the day.
We appreciate you.
I make the motion to approve agenda number twenty-seven.
Seventeen.
Pardon?
Number twenty-seven.
Oh, how about number seventeen? Approve proclamation twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, designating November fourth, twenty twenty-four as Roy Castleberry Day.
Moving second of all, favor raised your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Get your picture?
Yes.
Come on, yeah, everybody come on right.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations again. Thank you for your service. It's all about them anyways, go ahead.
One more, one more, one more.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Roy.
Yes.
Thank you, man.
Judge, I'd just like to point out too that in Roy's spare time back in twenty nineteen, he served as an outstanding grand jury foreman for Walker County as well. A lot of people don't know that. Standing job and I appreciate it.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to number nineteen. Jail discuss and take action on adding a medical correctional officer into the jail medical budget.
Didn't we just see you with us not too long ago?
We did.
Wordings did.
Word, the verb is different this time?
Y'all know I don't know what I'm doing about these, but, yep. And basically, go ahead.
That's the best one you did so far.
I'm proud of you, Kevin.
So we needed to clarify from the meeting on ten seven, it was the minutes said to approve it on a temporary basis. So we basically want to scratch that. He has two different budgets. He's got his jail budget and then he has the medical budget. So in the medical budget, there are two LBN positions. He has not been able to fill the LBN in years. So one of the current jailers has certifications as E M T that can fill that vacancy. They're, they're going to transfer from the jail budget to the medical budget. But they aren't, for lack of better words, qualified under the LBN squad. So we are going to see if we could add a position, not add any money. So he could have three positions, possibly do it as a one eleven, since the current LBNs are one twelves. Do it as a one eleven, what's your title, medical correctional officer. So at any given point, he would only have two positions. He could either have two LBNs or the LBN plus the medical correctional officer. That way then it keeps his jail position open for that jailer to, to hire a new jailer in that spot.
But the good part, we're not, we're not asking for anyone, just switching her from the jail bucket to the medical.
Okay, I'm good with that, but how do we put that in verbiage?
You said something, you're going to add a position.
Well.
Just converting a position?
Well, we don't want to take the one twelve completely away in the LBN in case the person decides to leave. And then he needs to refill it and an LBN applies. So that way it gives him the option to hire either a jailer with the E M T experience or an LBN.
So we're moving one person from the jail under the medical.
Actually, they're just, they're, they're applying and they're going to move over. So then it feel, it opens up a jailer position for him at the jail. And so we wanted to possibly add that in there because we don't want to do away with the one twelve altogether. Because if this, this employee leaves and a one twelve is able to be hired, he wants to be able to hire an LBN at that position. So kind of similar to what y'all used to do, you know, hire the operative or hire man as a five and pay him as a three type thing. Then alert to that.
Miss Patricia, I see you looking.
Is the jailer in the one eleven position?
No, they're in a jail for this right now.
So we'd add a position, we would add the funding for the jail position to cover it. And then he'll make a decision when he hires an LBN, I mean, LBN and one twelve, whether to keep the one eleven from the jail or hire in the jail.
So there's currently two one twelves in the medical budget. So we need to add a one eleven. But at any point, he can only have
But he, he'd use that money, right?
Yeah.
Can only have
It's a one twelve slash one eleven.
I mean, in the medical part.
Okay.
Three positions, two funded.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
At any one time.
So creating a medical corrections officer out of the jail medical budget, replacing one, one twelve with a one eleven.
Actually, L
Not replaced.
Twelve position to be filled at one eleven with medical corrections on the screen. But there needs to be the position.
Correct. Correct.
Y'all got all that? Thank you, you got it?
You got me tied to him, John.
Yeah, that'd be my motion.
I'll second that.
Moving second of all, favor raised your hand. Motion carries. Number twenty, discuss and take
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Discuss and take action on updates and revision to the Walker County EMS write-off policy as recommended by EMS.
Well, while working through with the new billing company EMS M P, one of the things that we requested of them initially was to help us work through our write-off policy, the one that was implemented in July of this year. So while looking through that, we all collectively kind of decided that that policy that was created in July is very hard to follow. It would be very hard for their billers to follow and we would constantly be in customer support with you guys trying to get you to approve things, which isn't kind of the standard. So their recommendation was to go back to the old policy with just a few changes. So we updated the section on the Walker County Jail, how we write those off. They implemented a discount for prompt pay as kind of a way for us to collect when we otherwise might not collect. So they can give discounts if people are going to pay promptly or put people on a payment plan, which wasn't tested for this policy. So they're hopeful that adding these these different options for people to pay their bill will get a, you know, more collections on them than we otherwise would have. Bankruptcies, they don't need to come back here because if they have bankruptcy, we, we can't touch it, the company can't touch it. So we kind of put that back where it was. And then the attorney settlement reviews, they're going to handle anything up to twenty percent reduction. Anything greater than a forty percent reduction, it would work with me and their legal team to help negotiate that. A lot of them are time sensitive to get back to the attorneys. And then pretty much anything that is not in this policy, it would be something that would come back to you guys for your
I didn't see any backup on this, Rachel. Did y'all get backup on it or no? I didn't see
It was emailed.
We're hoping to kind of have it all squared away so we can go live on the fifteenth.
So what we're looking at here, this is similar to what this company has seen in other locations.
Yes, it's comparable to other counties like Wallard County, Austin County. Ethics and patient population.
Quentin, did, did Quentin review it? Quentin?
I'm sorry?
Did you review it?
I have no objection.
Is and the, since it, it was not in the backup, our last policy, is this in the form of a policy that the court is adopting and signing off on? Or is this just information and the actual policy will be brought back?
I created it like the original one was. If I need to bring it back for their signatures, I'm willing to do that, but we need to get something
Because this one is way different from the currently adopted policy. So I think maybe a red line policy. I have no issues whatsoever with anything that's in here, but the, the the procedures that we go through to document it and the court actually approve it as part of the order as they have done in the past. Initially, we had something like this. It was not really well documented. And I think if we have a formal policy that goes through the court that identifies the court signs off, then we've got a better track record of what the court has approved.
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should probably bring an actual, a, a policy document back with it. And I was hoping to get you and your operation staff out of the finance side, but it doesn't appear that that's very possible.
It's, it's hard to do that based on
Okay.
I will say from the finance side, we have no real say in what the write-off policy is. That's really up to Commissioners Court. Our concern would be the procedures that were used to get the policy, that the policy's documented and that EMS documents the write-offs that they approved. So it's not the write-off itself, that's court policy. It's more the audit that and the process she goes through to document the write-offs that she's approving.
And that'll all be in our, in our system that we have with the billing companies.
Okay, I didn't see anything in the, the objectives. If you can just codify this thing and put it on the next agenda. I like the idea of a, maybe a red line from your, not the one that's in place now, maybe the one that was before. And then changes from the ones that we have in, now maybe in note form. So because it is to the one put in July was, was amazingly different than the one that was there. So it'd be hard. So if we could do that and get it to us as quickly as you could, so we have a little bit, little bit of time, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
If it gets us in line with everybody else and it's something that can be done, I'm, I'm all for that.
In the meantime, are you guys okay with me sending this over to them so they can get it in their system? Prior to the fifteenth?
We had approved it to most.
That'd be probably a no.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't do that yet.
Yeah, the court steps off, right?
Yeah.
Is there a time crunch or something you're under for? Or can it wait two weeks?
Wanting the go-live date to be the fifteenth.
Oh, really? So next Monday is what, the, we're closed Monday. So Tuesday would be what, the twelfth? I think, I think
Yeah, I barely know the date.
I know.
Well, could we, if we could we do something on the twelfth? I mean, what's, what's the hint? If we don't make the fifteenth, what, what happens?
I don't think there will be a super big holdup since they're going back for the past three months anyways, but I can call them today.
Two weeks will be the eighteenth and it will be three days
Yeah, I think
Yeah. Pass on twenty. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on update to Walker County EMS charity care policy.
Okay, so this one was like an internal policy with us. Okay, so this one was like an internal policy with us, um, that I had initially brought in twenty twenty-two, I believe. Um, nothing was ever signed, but this is kind of what we use for our charity care. The only thing I've updated on this is the billing address on here. That's the only change.
Okay. It was approved prior. So there's really no action for us to take on this?
I just changed it from the previous billing company's address to the new one.
We need to take action on it probably or?
I don't think so, we just changed the, it's, it's a policy and she just changed the billing address to it.
It's been before us before, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't see.
Maybe.
I don't see where, yeah.
Policy.
That is it right there, we're looking at.
Yeah, it's up on the board.
Oh, it's there.
That is it right there, yeah.
So sorry.
Okay, I don't think we can take an action on that.
Round number twenty-two, discuss and take action on updates to Walker County E M S fee schedule as recommended by E M S M C.
So again, this fee schedule is based on comparable counties to ours, um, there's really no change. We'll be going up on mileage by two dollars a mile. Um, our oxygen fee will go up five dollars, but then our B L S and A L S supply rates will be going down a little bit. Um, but the other, the other fees are all gonna stay the same.
So going from three fifty to two hundred, going from four fifty to three twenty-five, is that what I'm seeing up there, is that correct?
Yeah. And then the mileage is going up and the oxygen is going up.
Okay. I would be curious why we're going backwards on.
So part of the their ability to bill, one of the things we have in the write-off policy is their ability to take off those B L S or A L S charges. So it would be less that we're taking off then. I guess.
All right.
I mean, or if you guys want, we can leave the same as what we have is over there on the other side.
We already took the, the kick to the gut when we, when we put those in place, I hate to, I, I would hate to step back.
Go back.
Yeah, I would hate to step, I would like to step back, I'd like, my, my recommendation is gonna keep the B L S, A L S at the three fifty, four fifty and adopt the other two increases.
Okay.
I'll give you a second on that, that's your motion.
Yeah, my motion.
Moving second.
Make the second.
Okay.
Motion and second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Rachel.
Number twenty-three, discuss and take action on hiring a contract engineer to assess water drain use at District Attorney's Office.
Good morning.
Morning, Larry.
Good morning, um, I'm commissioning a contracting engineer to see what we can do about giving the water out of the.
It hadn't rained since once. What's the deal?
Well, I think we're working on a grant with Butch for FEMA to to get it fixed.
Yes, sir, we are, but we need a solid plan for what needs to be done, it's gotta be a good solid plan for what needs to be done.
Are we gonna stay in the house with the in contract engineers we have? Is that what we're doing or we're going outside?
That was my intention.
To stay in house? Cause we already got a contract with two engineers, so.
Yes, sir.
Is that possible, Miss Cheryl?
Yes. If, if both, either one of them can do it.
Yeah, I think G L, G L is.
Yeah.
I'm good with that, y'all good with it?
That a motion?
That's my motion, stay in house, we want to buy our two engineers.
I'll second.
Moving seconded all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on cost change for concrete project courthouse.
Okay, um, last weekend we had the concrete board up here above y'all's heads, uh, keeping water out from downstairs. And asked them to extend the trough drain out to the pool. We had this trough drain ending at the end. We asked them to go ahead and extend it out, that incurred, uh, more labor and more material charges and, uh, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, so, and do a change order to go for that. But the, uh, y'all, y'all approved the exact amount. That's why that's coming.
This is the one, about forty-five hundred dollars from the ready to bid.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought the water drain was from end to end. Level and flatten to pour cement on entire section. Cement to be four inches thick, thirty-eight inch rebar over sixteen inches with a water drain. To me, that reads water drain the whole length. If it doesn't, he didn't put rebar down the full length and he didn't do four inches of full length. It's all in the second sentence.
Same here?
No.
Did we ask him to go that, to do this?
We asked him to do this, I did.
So it's, it's done.
It's done, it looks good.
It's, I think it should be, it is.
Uh, I think you need to pay the bill regardless.
Yeah, we do, we need to pay the bill, talk about the other stuff. I made a motion to approve paying bearings construction to be additionally hundred and fifty dollar.
Well, how much was that stuff? Put up there some fancy, eight hundred dollars?
Uh, there's, uh, those.
I'll check.
Sixty one, I think, I'm, I'm not exactly sure that.
I'll give you the show.
Moving second all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on issuing an R F P for rebuilding the first floor entry of the courthouse.
Now it's time to move forward, the rest of the rebuilding done. Um, just like to go ahead and issue a request for proposal to local contractors to rebuild our entry to match what it used to look like.
That was all the stuff that was falling down? Okay.
All right, I make the motion to approve, number twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Larry. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on renewal of V F I S insurance policy for E M S effective October first, twenty twenty-four, fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
So, uh, this is our annual renewal, um, when, and normally it's already done by now. However, uh, there was a discrepancy in when they provided us, uh, the policy, there was some discrepancies in coverage on ambulances and we've been working on getting those, um, up to par with the other ambulances. And now we have done that, and so now I'm ready to approve it.
Yeah, I haven't seen you like it, you know, just the.
I don't, I don't want it any at all.
What was the increase on it?
Sorry?
There any increase?
Um, yes, it was because they had failed to put collision on one of the ambulances and they did not have adequate coverage on another one. So it was a four thousand dollar increase. Uh, so it went up to, I want to think it's a hundred and thirty thousand now instead of, uh, one twenty-five.
So a little bit higher.
It, it was, but now our ambulances are adequately covered, otherwise they would not have been.
So that's a budgeted funds, correct?
I'm sorry?
It's in budgeted funds.
Yeah.
I'm gonna approve.
I'll second it.
Moving second all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on the purchase of a Dodge Durango P P B for Constable precinct four.
They already do one.
We did do one, this is the second one that he is, uh, wanting, uh, to purchase. And again, wish.
Best whiskey.
Thank you. Uh, was, uh, the low bidder at forty-three thousand, one fifty.
And we did a frozen budget, right?
Three of them.
You did. And these were done by, uh, this is an interlocal agreement? Or an R F P? It, it was, uh, a bid due to the fact that it was, uh, we contacted three bidders and, uh, received bids, uh, it was not a formal, due to the fact that it was under fifty thousand. I'm sorry.
Our policies require if we spend more than fifty thousand on a vehicle, they have to do a bid out or on interlocal agreement.
Yeah.
Right.
This is, this is the second bid, you bid the first one out also, right?
You're correct, that was last year, this is this year.
It's.
It's all the same year.
Yeah. I got you, buddy. It's, it's, thank you, yeah, it's not a bid.
Yeah, bid, bid goes out on open market, basically.
All right, so a question, so we, you say we approved three, is that right? So is he coming back for another one? Another?
Received one, this is the second one.
All right, so when we do the third one, that's gonna have to be a formal bid then.
Because it, oh, it's.
It will be on a different, it will be on a tips.
Like a buy board? Okay, all right.
So we're good to go on this one.
You'll also, when you make this motion, need to remove the bid requirement or interlocal because that is what's in the policies.
But it's less than fifty thousand.
Correct. If we spend more than fifty thousand countywide, it has to be bid out. You can't bid out some vehicles and take a quote on another.
Okay, this is the first one we bought this year. So it was less than.
Truck fell through on the other one, so this is really, truly the first.
We need to make a motion to approve purchase of this per your quote from budgeted funds.
Yeah.
Is that right?
And then remove the, cause we're gonna do one, one, I mean, no doubt, but.
Well, the other vehicles that are planned for the future are on, either on a, a tips contract or a buy board contract. Those will not need to be bid out because of that fact.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, but in, in the policy, it specifically says if the county is going to spend more than fifty-five on a commodity, uh, our policy requires it to be bid out or an interlocal agreement. So I'm just saying you need to.
Exempt from the policy, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. You need to exempt from the policy. It's under fifty, so.
So.
Prove twenty-seven with exemption from policy.
There you go.
I'll second that.
Only seven exemption from policy.
Moving seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Good, Karen?
You seconded that.
Bill. Twenty-eight, discuss and take action on mold remediation for the county court at law court.
And now that we have the flower bed sealed up and we can move forward with the mold remediation because, uh, to make sure we didn't have any more water leakage in the, uh, county court law courtroom, uh, the judges' chambers and all around, um, we are ready to move forward with, uh, the mold remediation. And we have.
You got Allie?
Uh, Laura just, uh, messaged in and said that's the third Durango, he already has two.
Says the last, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So it's this one interlocal? Uh, no, ma'am. This is not, yeah.
This is a bid.
Uh, it, uh, I'm so sorry, it's not an interlocal, it's a quote. I think it's actually, it's a quote. Because it come in under fifty thousand.
Okay.
Let's not follow the policy, we need to make an exception, then Cheryl needs to read the policies. What exception? I, I'll give you the section as soon as we get back to the office. I think Kim provided that to you.
Now we're on the, the new one, right? Is that what we're talking about, Patricia? You talking about the?
Those were done by bid or interlocal agreement and our policy requires it.
So I mean.
I'll back and read.
Yeah, well then, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, um, I guess we need to get some clarity on that too, on, on that one there, so I think it may, may not be a bad idea just to bring something to us, cause, um, I mean, this is a, this is a, a maintenance project and I'm good, I mean, I'm, 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 I'll make the motion to approve it with an exemption if necessary, that's easy. But we know we're gonna spend more than fifty thousand dollars on maintenance during the year, so from here forward, do I have to, do I have to formally quote every maintenance project I have? I don't think that's the case. So there is something, some, something out there, some policy that we can go down there, I don't want us to discuss it up here, but I think it's right, who's right, who's wrong. It is, it's either, it's either good or it's not, so let's, let's do some research on that and get something back to us that we can, either it's a checklist or whatever, but with that in mind, I'll make the motion to approve it, it's item twenty-eight with an exemption to the purchasing policies, whether we need it or not.
Do you need to state the steam rate?
Yeah, to the steam rate for a price not to exceed forty-nine thousand, seven sixty-six and sixty-eight cents.
And what are they gonna give us for that? I mean, I had, y'all have documentation on all of this.
Larry, you're on.
Larry, you back there?
Yes, sir.
Have you looked at all these?
Yes, sir.
What do we get for that forty-nine, seven sixty-six? What are they gonna do for us?
All the contaminated materials, uh, scrub and, uh, clean, first of all, uh, same area. Remove all contaminated air, uh, materials. Clean, follow-up testing is on us because, uh, we can't have them do a follow-up testing, it's a complex business. So follow-up testing would be on us. Is this the only other expense that we could use?
So are we gonna do follow-up testing?
Yes, sir, we are, we have to.
So that needs to be, I see that should be a line item in this project, if we're.
But if they're not gonna do it, it's on us.
Well, I know that, but we're getting ready to spend and this goes back to, there's a project and then there's components of their project. Component one is gonna be mold remediation. Component two is gonna be either build back or follow-up testing and number three will either be build back or follow-up testing, whether you do it before or after. So, um, that one. If you, I.
I mean, I'll be more than happy to do a formal solicitation. There are a lot of contractors, I say a lot, one by board as far as that goes, uh, none are local. But I'll be more than happy to, uh, reach out to them.
Anytime we're below fifty, then it's a policy up here for us. We can say, I'm gonna give you the exemption for it, no big deal. If we go fifty thousand and a penny, now we're at state.
But I got you.
And this is a component of a larger project that puts us at almost sixty, so all of a sudden I don't feel comfortable going forward with it.
And I'm good with that, that's why we said discuss and take action.
Yeah.
I kinda agree with you, Bill, I think we really need to do something different other than this.
Okay.
So we will do that, we'll solicit it.
You gonna rescind your motion?
Yeah, I'll rescind my motion on that.
All right, we're gonna pass on twenty-eight. Order twenty-nine, discuss and take action on order twenty twenty-five dash eleven, amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Twenty-five eleven is fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, which ended September thirtieth. There were several open P O's at the end of the year where the merchandise won't be received within the sixty-day period. Uh, requesting to carry those P O's over to, uh, the project fund. Couple, uh, movements between departments to cover some budget overage. So eleven thousand, two forty, contingency, uh, transferring to C C L, twenty-four hundred, three hundred to two seventy-eight, twenty-eight hundred to Constable three, forty dollars to adult probation, historic permission, seven hundred dollars. This is basically payroll calculations and accruals, that's for the share of fuel, five thousand dollars. Um, and you can see the details of the different departments.
Yeah.
Uh, going down to planning and development, there is also a transfer uh, from, uh, four thousand dollars from salaries to operations to cover, uh, the last engineering bill that came in. And then, uh, eleven thousand, two fifty-eight is the transfer from the general fund to the, uh, project fund. Road and Bridge, final page two, Road and Bridge precinct one, we had, uh, some reimbursable from the state. We had a invoice that came in, so this is making that same adjustment for the receivable, uh, uh, to show the revenues and show the expenditures, uh, and then budgets revenue, the eleven, two fifty-eight going in. And then on our projects, but, uh, And then on our projects, but uh, page, you'll see the eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty eight dollars coming in to the different projects that were approved in first order. And I think that's And then on our designated by legislature, these were expenditures this year that were paid from prior year collecting.
I'll second that.
Moving, so you have all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, thirty, discuss, take action on order twenty twenty five dash twelve, amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Uh, it's been fifty four hundred and eighty seven dollars from contingency, forty eight ninety five for the public defender contract increase, and five hundred and ninety two for uh, a subscription increase. Uh, EMS fund. Um, last week, we talked about the ambulances that were coming in and the split of the money between the LAT CF funds and the general, and the EMS fund contingency. This is altering that a bit, there there was not enough funds in the LAT CF funds. So part of, part of the hundred thousand that was proved out of contingency is moved down to the vehicle, and then we're moving some of that contingency capital, and this gets those two purchases and their components, aren't they?
Make the motion to approve agenda number thirty, as presented.
Second.
Moving, so you have all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And the last page of uh, uh, order twenty five twelve, it said that was the project's fund. One of the things that was mentioned last week was the eleven thousand, four hundred from the waystation projects. Uh, move that into the countywide facilities projects. Uh, we had an SO camera security system uh, that is completed, moving that back into contingency. Good Shepherd Mission, uh, that project was not completely spent. What this amendment would do is move that money down the project contingency, and if that project is brought back up and a new contract done, the money would be in a contingency. Um, and then uh, the project that were moved last year for the twenty twenty four brought in.
Any questions?
No question.
Yeah. Number thirty one, discuss and take action on allowing veteran service officer to apply for grants through the Texas Service Commission, that's my motion.
Okay.
Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty two, discuss and take action on available surplus rat material from Texas out Brian District. And that'd be my motion.
Okay.
Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty three, discuss and take action on nominations to Walker County Appraisal District Board of Directors by voting entitlement and resolution twenty twenty five dash oh five. Be my motion to spread the votes equally among the moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number thirty four, discuss and take action on authorization to issue requests for proposals, RFP, for administrative and planned development services for community development block grant mitigation, CDBG MIT, Resilient Community Programs, RCP, grant programs administered by Texas General Land Office. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty five, discuss and take action to authorize Walker County to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs for administrative services and requests for qualifications for engineering services for management and implementation services for Texas General Land Office Disaster Recovery Resilient Program, that's be my motion.
Second.
Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty six, discuss and take action to purchase trailer mounted hydro heater from federal surplus items number Texas zero two four dash seven seven four seven dash two seven dash zero zero one, in the amount of thirty five hundred dollars from precinct four funds.
My motion.
I'll second that. Was it San Antonio or Fort Worth?
That's right.
Fort Worth.
Moving, and seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Land Development, thirty seven, discuss and take action on Brad and Carrie Mc- Mc- McDonald's request for variance to onsite server facility regulations of Walker County regarding continued use of onsite server facility under permit number nineteen ninety three dashes two zero five four, farmer survey.
Administrative variance was not a notice of approval on the file, there is an inspection on the file, we do have a file, distant towards approval to consider. That's what's the board call. And you have the backup from the, from the other.
Yeah, so you don't have any problems, anything, any words that
We're not asking for variance to regulations.
Yeah.
Like I said, it 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 predates me, but, and there was while we come across a file like this, courts have seen it before, we have some of the paperwork moving, not all the paperwork in the file, that's the case here. They've, they've provided you some additional paperwork in addition to what's in the normal file, in hopes that you guys will see fit to instrumentally approve the file.
Yeah, and San Antonio, it looks like you signed off on it, so I'm gonna have Mr. Kern Doge to get motion to approve.
Second thing.
Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty eight, discuss and take action on Dewey and Amanda Brown request for variance to section A one point five of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding residential rental community requirements for the property and in the rare survey.
And assist y'all with the application process is as well as I. And we can get you guys set up with a, an account and then we'll get you guys apply and we'll kind of help you all through the application process. And if you guys do get funded, uh, we'll help you out throughout the, the whole grant process. Um, so the project implementation pays up to about ten million dollars, uh, for projects. Um, and like I was saying, it helps with those like fuels projects or anything in y'all CWPP. Uh, I was taking a look at y'all CWPP before this. And you'll have a lot of areas that you've listed as being high, uh, to extreme fire danger area. Uh, with a lot of risk. And so projects in those areas, when those communities and those neighborhoods are going to be areas. You're going to want to put in that application to kind of do those fuel reduction projects. Um, but that's, that's the general gist of it. Do y'all have any questions or anything? Um, I know it kind of went over kind of quickly, but is there anything y'all want to know about it or?
We're going to run this pretty much through Butch's office, like Butch. Right? I mean, you, you're the one that architected or were the architect of our, our wildfire protection plan. So visiting with you, would he come visit us? Uh, prior to we all sit down and get the, get the plan back out because my, I'm sure mine has a little dust on it. And, but I'm ready, I'm ready to kick it off. They got some money from Walker County. I bet we got some places we can, we could work it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And like I was saying, y'all do have all those three criteria that the US Forest Service is looking for. So y'all are already ahead of the curve, uh, than most people who apply for this thing. Um, you guys aren't going to miss anything, like any points out anywhere. Um, and so I definitely think it's a good opportunity for y'all to get some fun and to, you know, do those projects and, you know, be able to get equipment and educational stuff and hire, maybe even hire on some people. But we can, we can discuss that further with y'all at a later date if you'd like to.
To Butcher, Brian, I was trying to jot down everything real quick. Fuels, education and outreach. Those are the main three things you said, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Well, there's, there's more to it. Um, those are just the main things people usually, uh, apply for. Um, outreach, fuel reduction projects, equipment. Um, there's even like getting like materials printed, um, stuff, just stuff like that. There's, there's a lot that goes into it. We're also waiting for the notice of funding opportunity for this round to come out. Once that comes out, we'll have a better detailed list of things that, uh, you can apply for and have, uh, in your application. But once that comes out, I can pass that along to y'all and we can kind of go over and be like, okay, this is what y'all can apply for and, and request in your application.
Who's going to work with the San Houston National Forest for a fuel reduction around the subdivision zones?
Um, well, that, that's going to be, uh, I'm not sure who, who the FMO or the, who, who's, who's out there running the forest. Um, but the, the grant is, is strictly for, uh, local governments and NGOs, uh, tribes and stuff. It's not for federal. So, um, nothing on federal property can be done, but around it can be done. And that'll be kind of up to y'all, like where you want to put those projects and all of that.
And you said equipment in here to find equipment.
Uh, it could be, so from last round, we had, um, we had eleven county or eleven, uh, applicants apply. And a lot of them applied for equipment and most of them had, uh, things like tractors with mulcher attachments, skid steers, um, trucks. Um, a lot of things like that, basically things for them to be able to do those fuel reduction projects on their own. Um, or even you can, another part of it is you can pay for contractors to, to come in there and do the work, uh, for y'all. And like I said before, that will also be, uh, illustrated in the notice of funding opportunity, um, this next round. So that might change.
Yeah, you gotta use it to clear lines.
I'm kind of looking forward to them. Looking forward to the kickoff meeting now. Absolutely. Okay. So where do we go from here? Do we set a meeting up or what, what's the?
They were waiting for them to declare the, declare it open.
Hmm. Yes. Once they declare it open and now they, it's been projected that it's supposed to come out here in the next two weeks. Um, but with the election going on and the holidays, we think it might get pushed back to January sometime, but we will, uh, we'll keep y'all posted on it. Um, I will talk with Matt Ford. Maybe we can come have a meeting and kind of talk about some stuff. Um, kind of plan for the application. And then also, once the application does happen, I could kind of assist y'all and, and kind of not riot for y'all, but like kind of like tell y'all like, hey, this is what the US Forest Service is looking for, uh, when their people are submitting their applications.
Important no action for us right now.
No, no, this is workshop. I just want you all to start by getting your mind set on projects.
Absolutely.
So then if you had any questions on it.
Brandon, you got a couple of minds.
Said we can hire contractors or can we hire employees?
Yes.
Work for us to do this.
We can. It's a fi- it's a five-year, um. Yeah.
Okay. That'd be kind of stuff.
I think Sessions Office reached out to us back in May about this promoting it. So we got a lot of encouragement. It's all right.
Yeah, I think we need a haul truck, a trailer to haul our dozer around.
The equipment we purchased through this grant, when the grant five years is up, the equipment belongs to Walker County.
Right. So we want to buy a mulcher and a dozer to do buffers around neighborhoods. We do that for five years and then it goes back to us.
Okay. But we don't know with the grant, how much it's going to be for them.
It can be up to ten acres.
Right.
Yeah, there's plenty of money there.
And we're only, there's only two eligible counties in the district. We're one of two eligible counties in our district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very nice.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Pace?
No, I think I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pace.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good one.
All right, you too. All right, we'll go to Natalie with Grant Works.
Good morning.
Me, uh, I'm Natalie with Grant Works. Business card. Judge, I know you've got one, but.
You live in Austin?
I don't. Actually, I live in Corpus Christi.
That's better.
I think so too.
I felt sorry for you for a minute.
Uh, Austin is a, it's a rough place, but. Our company is based out of Austin, uh, but we're all pretty remote. Y'all are, maybe some of y'all know Miranda Harris.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, Miranda used to be my boss, uh, here working for Grant Works. I was a grant writer. And then I came over to business development. So now I oversee all of business development for the state of Texas. Um, and so we've, we've worked with you guys for, for some time and we really enjoy working with Walker County. And when Judge said, hey, I think we could benefit from learning more about grants and actually really understanding how our company functions and what we do. So I really want to get to know you guys a little better too during this time, if that's possible. And find out what some of your needs are, what are some of your questions or concerns you've had? Um, and hopefully I can answer them to the best of my ability. Uh, I did provide a PowerPoint this morning. I don't know if we're going to be able to go with it.
Oh, yeah. We all got it.
Yeah, yeah, we have it right there.
Okay, cool. Probably not going to go through all those slides, I promise. If we are not, um, it's really more of a guide. I'm not going to follow it to a T. Um, so let's see, we will start with, I will start with the first page, uh, not the first page, but one page. So that's our grant agencies overview. So what we've provided is page, the next page. We go. So this is the state agencies and the federal grant management overview. So this kind of gives you guys, uh, listing of all of the different agencies that we have worked with, are willing to work with. Um, in the state of Texas, that would be TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, General Land Office, Department, Department of Emergency Management, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, Texas Department of Transportation, Parks and Wildlife, um, TCEQ and Water Development Board, and then the Texas Comptroller. Are different funds that are often available through the comptroller's office. Grant management, um, directly through HUD, we will do all of the FEMA programs as well. Then the US Department of Treasury, Agriculture and Commerce and Economic Development Administration. Quite a few in there. And that's not, that's just to name a few. I know there are a lot of others like USDA. And there, there are others that we will manage as well. So. It's just to start. And then the next one really talks about the life of a grant. So at Grant Works, this is kind of how we have split it up. Because we try to put an experienced person at every stage of a grant life to make sure that we deliver the best services possible to you all. What that means is we have a different handoff. So it may seem like you've got a different person. And that, it is that you have a different person, but it's for a reason. It's purposeful. Because if we have the same person doing everything, that one person may not be good at doing everything. And that would be a disservice to the county. So we have procurement, project development. So that's always going to be your grant writing team. Okay? Then it goes into the award contract. So if the, if the grant is awarded, at that point, it will hand, we'll hand it off to the project manager. So that'll be the person who keeps it through the rest of the grant until it's close out. That project manager will walk you through all those steps, depending on what's required for the grant. So it'll be your starting up, making sure you guys are compliant with civil, uh, rights, laws and regulations associated with federal funding, fair housing, environmental review, acquisition, if there is any, uh, that you have to go through. Uh, they're going to work hand in hand with your engineering, engineering team to go through the formal design. Um, then they're also going to help with the bidding. This is where it's really helpful. You don't have to deal with all the procurement on your own. They'll help you get the RFPs together. They'll, uh, help oversight on construction, make sure we're staying in line with the timeline that's associated with the grant. So we don't fall behind. Uh, these agencies are really strict and they give us basically a schedule. And they say you have to have so much percentage of the grant complete by a certain timeline within the life of the grant. And that's what our responsibility is as an administrator. Uh, we also help compliance with Davis Bacon and Labor Standards. So that's another different federal regulation. We have to make sure we're following. Uh, we will help you with it. Um, and then ultimately we finalize the project and we will close it out. We'll finish with a completion report, send it off to the agency. And we will close out successfully that grant. In the midst of that construction and bidding process, and really all of this, there's reports that get submitted to those agencies, either be quarterly or annual, depending on the grant. They're all a little different. Uh, but most of them are quarterly. We'll submit the quarterly reports to you. Once the project is completed, we also support with monitoring because they'll come back years later and want to do a monitoring visit. And so we, we're still engaged at that point if you need us to help with that monitoring visit. So, um, we're going to go ahead and go down to. Does anybody have questions about any of those before I skip on to my next?
So I didn't, I didn't have a question. We've got all these agencies out there, USA.gov or Grant.gov or whatever the heck it is. And that gets confusing. Um. Do y'all have a way that y'all look at what's coming out of that portal? And, uh, I guess. How do we say, we want to look at, we need some help with, in these three areas?
Sure.
How do y'all find those grants in that website and say, hey, these will help you in your areas that you're looking for?
That's a really good question. Uh, most of these agencies all have a subscription, uh, feature where you subscribe to their mailouts or to their notifications. So that really helps us because then it'll, we, number one, because this is what we do, we're familiar with a lot of the programs. And so we'll periodically keep searching them to see if new information has popped up. The other thing we'll do is create subscriptions so that we get notifications as they're submitting out notices to people of, you know, funding availabilities that are coming out. Um, a lot of, well, with federal funds, they are required to go through public hearings because they have to notify potential constituents or recipients that these funds are going to be made available. When that happens, they'll start sending e-blasts out to everybody, letting you know because they're required to. And when we see those, we know, okay, something's coming down. There's been, um, there's, there are funds that have been released. They're fixing to do a dispersment or fixing to put together a program or, or a new round. So that's part of our job. Now, how does that get to you? Well, you could, one, if you really, if you wanted to, you could get on USDA and you could do the same thing. You could subscribe their, their email list so that you start getting those emails. And then if you have a question about something you see, give us a call and we'll walk you through what it is that you've seen, if it piques your interest. Uh, that's one way. The other way is once we become aware of what you're looking for, what your particular precinct needs are, then we do our best as these things become available and as those go out, we will try to match you to something. Uh, so it's a combination effort. And we do our best to try to match you as much as possible. It's not always, you know, a hundred percent because it's difficult to do that, but we just do our best. And as long as there's a relationship and we get to know you, then it's easier for us to have an idea of where you stand and what you're looking for.
So we can come up with a list with twenty projects and get Natalie's like, hey, find us some grants.
You could do that.
So.
Yeah. So, um, I'm going to jump to slide number thirteen, just so I'll know. Um, so does that answer your question, kind of what you were looking for? Um, what I like to do is sit with you at some point individually, um, and then have a conversation about what are the challenges you need. Every precinct's different. Um, or what are some of the things you might need and how might we be able to help you? Um, I've got a team of about thirteen client services managers who, uh, who are over the entire state of Texas. Uh, there's a gentleman who covers the H-GAP region. Um, and then I've got another gal that handles the BD cog region. So I would assign one of them to you guys so that they can work with you one-on-one. And they will be responsible for making sure they research a lot of this information and meet with you individually. Any questions?
No, I'd like to meet whoever you assign to.
Sure. Yeah. And I'll stay on top of it for a while till we get, I don't want to, I don't like to depend on a relationship. Um, so let's talk a little bit about Texas Department of Agriculture. So Texas Department of Agriculture Grants, they focus on low-income populations in the counties, cities and towns in Texas. The grants aim to improve infrastructure, water, sewer, street drainage. Um, felonias is not something that will apply to you because you're not supposed to, United States, Mexico, or. Um, they are typically on an annual and biannual cycle. Um, the scoring is a major component of the competitive grants, um, and with TDA. Uh, there's an entitlement versus non-entitlement feature. So what that basically means is that if you're receiving funds as an entitlement county or, you know, or community through HUD directly, you are not eligible to apply under the CD fund, uh, through Texas Department of Agriculture. Um, we can go to the next slide, which just talks about TDA, CDVG grant fund. This is the largest fund in TDA. Um, under, uh, CDVG, there are multiple grants. There's the downtown revitalization main street. Uh, there used to be the FAST grant, which was fire ambulance um, and service vehicles, but they did away with that this year. Don't know if they're going to bring it back. We're hoping. Um, and then there's a community development grant, which is the biennial one. That one is competitive within each cog region. So that what they do is the state will, will disperse allocations to every single cog region. So H-GAP gets theirs. And every county who's eligible to apply within that cog region can, uh, can all competitively apply for that grant. Uh, the county can or any community within the county that's not an entitlement. Um. This year's round was seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is the most it's been. It's usually, uh, five hundred thousand is what it has been the last several cycles. And before that, it was much lower. Rural health grants, um. This is the small rural health, uh, sorry, small rural hospital improvement plan. Um, I will be honest. We at Grant Works do not do much of these, uh, if at all.
I have, he's got a question.
So sorry.
The last grant.
Yes, sir.
Bulk of that money typically goes to water projects. Is that, I know that you listed infrastructure and roads, but is the, the way that it's graded, those usually end up in water projects, right?
Well, actually it depends on the cog region and what they vote to for their priorities to be. So the, every cog is different. Some cogs in Texas will have roads, the, the, the primary, you know, highest scoring activity that you can apply for. Uh, there might be others for the drainage. Um, so it really is, is dependent upon the cog. The cog has to, they have to, they're executive. They, they talk about it amongst themselves with the other members. Um, they have to vote with the priorities on, but will vote on what the priorities will be. Yeah. Yeah. And what that means is they'll split it up into like three tiers. And they'll say, if you submit your grant in this activity category, you get all fifty points. Do a second tier project, it's forty and then, you know, thirty. The point allocation also changes by cog because every cog in the state of Texas is different and does it a little differently. So it just depends. Yes. And that can change by cycle. So let's go to Parks and Wildlife real quick. So Texas Parks and Wildlife, that is a great one that we do. Um, we will write grants in. Uh, ask us to manage it. We will manage it as well. Management doesn't really take a whole lot. Just because Texas Parks and Wildlife is really good about managing and doing a lot of the legwork for you. So we don't typically have to get too involved too much. Uh, we do have clients who will ask us to manage it. Um, and they typically will cover our costs outs because it doesn't cover administrative fees. It will cover our costs directly, uh, because it's usually minimal what we charge. Um, but it just depends on the grant itself. Um, this is a very expensive, you'll see where it says match for local parks grants are typically fifty percent. What they really mean is a hundred, a hundred. So if you ask for a hundred thousand, you're going to put in a hundred thousand, but they call it a fifty-fifty. Yeah. So, so I always tell everybody, if you really want a park grant, start budgeting for it and maybe split it into two years if you need to, because it can add up quite quickly. Any questions on parks grants? No? So this can cover trails, um, facilities. Uh, it's a really good grant. You can actually do a big parks plan. Uh, may not necessarily be something the county wants to do, but if you have a city within your jurisdiction that you think might be eligible or would like, need something like this, that would be another thing to consider. So that's just another idea. Um, well, let's go to general land office. So their annual grants, they tend to be tied to natural disasters. Um, funds are still tied to national objectives. So they typically will have to meet, uh, the urgent, an urgent need population. Um, or it will need to be a low to moderate income population. Scoring is also a major component of these grants. They're typically very competitive. It's rare you see an allocation. And mitigation funds are part of the long-term recovery from disasters. So they'll cover mitigation as well. Um. Does anybody have any questions about GLO? There's a lot of grants that come through GLO, but it depends on the disasters that we see. Um, y'all talked about the DRRP earlier. Y'all any questions about that one?
GLO is a frustrating one for us because so much of it is tied, especially if they send it through HUD, makes tricky projects for us. At the county level especially. So. So, so there's a GLO grant that's on a short fuse. Are you going to cover that later? Do we need to cover it now?
We can go it. So let, well, there's two slides right after this. There's RCP. And then there's the DRRP. Is it one of these that you're talking about?
The DRRP.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go to that slide. It said, not, it's. This whole section is really just for open conversation.
It's all we approved at the ankle to a level.
Yeah.
So let me just read, let me cap what you're going to cover what this one is. So this is all the leftover money that they have from all of these DRs. The Hurricane Ike and Dolly, which is crazy, goes back to where I can Dolly, the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen floods. Um, Hurricane Harvey, the twenty eighteen floods and the twenty nineteen disasters. You are, Walker County is eligible to apply under most of those.
I'll go with number five.
So, yeah. So what GLO is doing, and it's crazy, they gave a thirty day window for the surveys to be submitted. That's the short fuse you're talking about, right?
Well, and, and it's only got a two-year to completion too.
That's correct. That's correct. Yep. So it's best to select projects that are close to shovel-ready. You've got something that's already has pre-designs to it. You have an idea of what it's going to cost you to get done. Um, something that's not going to take too long under implementation. Drainage activities typically take a very long time. Oftentimes you need acquisition. So acquisition's another component to consider. It's going to take time with acquisition. Um, there's a lot of potential limitations if you're trying to meet that twenty-four month period.
So in my reading on this, um, one of the previous slides you put up there was urgently, and does that?
Oh, sure.
Is that what included in this or is this one only moderate to?
It's one or the other. So it has to meet a national, the national objective has to check that box. There's actually a question in the survey that it will ask, are you submitting this beneficiaries-wise? Are they needed? Is it an urgent need or is it LMI population? So it'll be one or the other. Urgent need is difficult to, to, to demonstrate. It can be difficult to demonstrate. When it comes to beneficiary documentation, LMI is always sort of the, the gold. I would hate to use the word gold standard, but it is the better way to go. Um, and you can make sure that it's a LMI percentage. It's not a scrutiny. It's not.
So on the LMI, yeah, I'm just trying to get this right in my head. If we want to do a road project, we get some road projects.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know, I don't know the acronyms. Um, we know those were load of order. Uh, if we wanted to do a project, so like, uh, build a fire station or whatever, that fire station or, or, or multiple fire stations, okay? Does Walker County in general considered load of moderate?
Yes, by HUD waiver. So I was looking at your HUD waiver data for this program. They're allowing us to use a HUD waiver LMI, which I believe is fifty-nine percent off the top of my head. Um, well, don't check that number. Um, but yes, so if you do that, here's the, here's the weird thing about that situation. There's tieback requirement. So. What GLO has done is GLO has gone in and they have prescored everybody according to their, their scoring criteria for these. And they're saying, if you submit a grant under one of these categories, basically when you go in and do the survey, it's going to spit out what your prescore is. And based on that prescores, how they're going to determine whether you get invited back to do, uh, the phase two, which is the full application. You look to do the best under Ike and Dolly. You're going to, you look to do well in several, uh, score well in several, that's what I mean. Um, Ike and Dolly's one, Harvey's the other, and it's the eighteen floods that you do, you look to do well in as well. Um.
Eighteen South Texas, right?
Nineteen. We, we weren't in five.
Yeah, six.
We're showing eighteen and nineteen. Yeah. But Ike and Dolly is your highest one and it's a competitive, they're all competitive. The smaller buckets are going to be really tight because a lot of people are going to find those. But that, there's more money available in Hurricane Ike and Dolly and Harvey. Um, we don't get to handpick which competition you're going to submit it under. They manually sit there and say, you're going to score best in Ike and Dolly. So if they, yeah, we'll send you over there. They'll, they'll split it up that way. Um, so going back to the tieback, you'll have to demonstrate that there were damage, that the projects are directly related to damages sustained as a result of that, of those disasters. So let's say you submit project one and it gets funded under Ike and Dolly, which are qualified for. They're going to say, okay, were those roads inundated during Ike and Dolly? Do you have documentation for that? And we're going to have to find something. So the same thing for Harvey. You know, so you're going to go with roads because it's a simpler, quicker project for two-year window. You'll just have to show and demonstrate there was, you know.
Yeah, we're, the one we're waiting on now, well, it was Harvey, right? The grant we're waiting for the GLO?
It was the, yeah, no, Harvey, I think we closed. It was the GLO. It was the MIT mod grant. That's the one we have out there.
That's the one still out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a particular road that, that particular grant will do about half of it. And it was, I think it was damaged in Harvey. If I remember right. So the other half of the road, could it be picked up with this grant?
You can.
It's already qualified for LDM.
They said that if you have activities that you're considering, and I have to be real careful how I word some of this stuff right now with this one. But if, if you do have eligible activities, that is considered an eligible activity. They said you've got other projects that you've started and finished.
When started because we can't get there, the GLO.
Okay. So if they stopped you and you got to get it redone, yes, technically they said yes, as long as it checks all the boxes on this one. So that's DRRP. This is a quick turnaround. Um. So, so yes, we did ask the question if procurement would stand if you had already an administrator under this, one of these DRs previously, in which case like Harvey. We did ask the question if procurement would stand if you had already an administrator under this, one of these DRs previously, in which case like Harvey did. Um, and they said, depends on the language. Well. That didn't make us feel very comfortable cuz they don't, they won't look at that for everybody. So the recommendation is to just start a formal process, so you already get that going. Um, the survey's a pretty quick, easy lift, so it shouldn't be too challenging. And they've given really great guidance, um, the GLO has. Um, let's go, any other questions under GLO before I proceed?
So doing the math. But on that, go back to that screen.
Oh, sorry. It was.
So doing the math on the, on the, if everybody just gets the minimum allocation on the projects, there's two hundred and fifty projects. Basically, everything, there's only two hundred and fifty other can be paid out, if everybody just gets the minimum.
If ever, yes, correct.
So going down from there, if somebody gets a five million dollar allocation in twenty sixteen floods, that one's, that's one instead of, instead of ten.
Yes.
So it's, it's gonna be super, I mean, it's gonna be super competitive.
Very competitive. And so that's where really looking at some of the models that they've created is gonna be, um, critical. That you guys do, after looking at our research, you guys are in a really good spot, whereas others are not.
Those of y'all looking at the square window turnaround.
Yeah, that too, yeah, yeah.
I've, I've talked to a couple of people and you, it's kind of one of those things. There's a lot of people who, who look to do really well and aren't submitting because of the window. And so that's the other thing to consider is how many people are gonna not submit a survey simply because it's, you know.
Short fuse.
Yeah, and it's the middle of the holidays, too. There's a lot of people already starting, funky schedules because it's November. Um, and so many of them are. So that's gonna leave room on the table for some of these.
So when we did that bit most of, I'm talking about. Did y'all have all that engineered the roads itself?
They're not done yet. Not, they're not engineered yet.
Yeah, Johnny, what's your last name?
Green.
Yeah, he, he's basically engineered his part of it. But we haven't.
Said that wrong. What was the other one where we got all the, uh, funding from the CBDG grant? Where I did five roads, you did?
I think that was Harvey. Harvey was, Harvey was a big one for us. Get a lot of money out of Harvey. Um.
Joe, and y'all, you and Ronnie, you and Danny had y'all's contracted out.
Yes.
Like knife forever.
Yes, knife forever did.
Did y'all, oh, did, did all that stuff have to go through engineering?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, projects that weren't funded, that y'all did all?
Don't think so, cuz that's been too far back, man.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was like.
Well, I'm thinking about the time there.
Like six months to get it designed.
Yeah, that's what I'm more concerned about than anything.
Yep. Yep.
On, on the roads part of it.
If you're gonna do, if you look at a road to do in-house like we do, and like you do a lot of times, then it's just a matter of, hey, get that dude, design, single line drawing, something like that. Be something stamped that I can get, you can start it up on, but if you're gonna design it, and then bid it out, that's gonna be super tight. Cuz that'd be a whole different level of design.
And on top of having to get your surveys, make sure it's low to moderate. You'd almost have to go.
Yeah, and that's getting harder and harder to do as people move in.
It is.
To beat the LMI. And it's just, uh, it's changing. Our county's changing a lot.
Are there, um. Well, we're gonna be a place like under this DRRP, when people start submitting surveys and stuff, will there be, will they have like an active list of submitted projects that they'll, that they'll be putting up there? Do you know that? That they, for consideration, or, or is it, is it just?
Are you talking about, for example, when you're doing the survey, round one? You're in the portal, actually doing the survey, or they're gonna be suggested activities for like objects?
Yeah, either suggested activities or the, so it's just go.
No, it's, I know, I know. No, it's, they're not. They're literally saying, these are your eligible activities.
Yeah.
Which your eligible activities are, um, street and street improvements, water waste water, drainage flood.
Yeah.
Um, oh, emergency communications equipment is the other one as well. Um, so a fix, permanently a fix.
We talked about maybe that new tower with dispatch?
Yeah.
Can qualify under that?
That would be perfect.
Um, the only thing about that would be still that, the, which you could do a tieback probably easily with something like that, when you got the whole one, so. Go back to your question. No, they won't show you stuff like that till after they announce probably awards. Do you wanna do it?
So what about stuff that, like, uh, in Hurricane Harvey, we, we, uh, had animal shelter, basically, and I don't want. Use that term loosely cuz I don't want us to let her think we're on a shelter, but we.
Disaster.
A disaster.
A disaster shelter, somewhere where they could be housed, livestock and all that.
Something to complement our human shelter.
Yes. Yes, yes. Our animals need help too.
With nothing like that.
I've never seen something like that done through the GLO personally, and not many of us have, because it's not something they typically. Mo- money agencies would not typically facilitate, you know, cover something like that. A lot of them will allow for supplies, medical equipment, veterinary, you know. Costs if you have injured animals that need support. Um, you know, and I've, there's the, what is it, ASPCA? There's, uh, USDA sometimes can help with that, but again, you're looking at more of a response than actual, you know.
No one animal shelter. Yeah.
I haven't seen one that, maybe there might be a private foundation who will do something like that. Um, you may even consider some of the, like through ASPCA, this could sound funny. I know like Rachel Ray donated money to that foundation. So there may be something available through them. They have an actual grant that's for veterinary, which, you know, care and all these things in the event of a disaster, or wake of a disaster. And they're giving up to a million dollars for grants.
That's where we add animal shelter over here to the scope of work that we want them to look for.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there might be an opportunity somewhere, but.
Backup generators for our buildings?
We do backup generators. That's an eligible activity.
What was your generator, Butch?
Yeah, mine was, I was not cheap.
Yeah, I know. Well, I figured if we could just put the rest of the buildings that we don't have.
Right.
We, y'all got those two, but we also have precinct two.
Right.
Um, we have buildings. What, what else isn't on the grant we got going, Butch?
Okay, we don't have JP three.
Yeah.
JP two.
JP four.
JP four.
And then we don't have, Danny's barn doesn't have a generator? You got one?
I've got one.
Yeah.
You got one.
Yeah, my, mine won't carry the whole thing, but it carries what we need.
But Andy's is on the other grant. Annex courthouse and DA?
DA.
Are all on the other grant.
Fire space.
And we feel like we're gonna get those on that grant.
So other, other options for mitigation, under mitigation would be through Texas Department. Or could be through Texas Department of Emergency Management, so that's a little bit different. Um, if we're ready to move on for DR under it. Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of things. As is, Colt mentioned the, the students in the tower.
Uh huh.
He said something about being LMI. So one thing too unique about our county. So our dispatches, our dispatch county one. Dispatch can be looked at as a county.
Sure, sure.
So that's LMI already in place. We don't have to go out.
The waiver, the waiver for Walker County through GLO for this one is, is that fifty-nine? So if it's, if it's gonna benefit the entire county, you, you can use that waiver.
Or what about fire stations? We have three ESDs that are all fixed and built fire stations and.
That one's really difficult because of the tieback to DR, under this program.
Okay.
But that would, we could look at other, we're gonna look at other stuff.
All right.
So, um.
Granted, the shelter thing, the problem we've always had in the past when we've tried to hunt funds for that, Butch, Butch and I have looked at it before. Is meetings, all of the grants have some kind of benefit cost tieback. And when they look at animals, they, they, they don't tie animals to saving human life. If you could ever successfully make the argument that saving those animals also gets people out, which is, there's a lot of data out there suggests that. Some people don't need, you can't agree with them, and so they say. That's been one of the problems we've ever had, is, is reaching a benefits cost ratio on this project.
There can also be the argument of an economic impact if you're talking about actual livestock, cuz that's a totally different situation. So I would. But, um, very good. Yeah, that's true. That's the VCA's make a challenge with that. So, going on to, let's talk about TDM stuff really quick. Six slides. I don't know. Um, so under the Texas Department of Emergency Management, there are multiple programs that we can apply for. They're all part of the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Programs under FEMA. We throw the words TDM and FEMA around interchangeably, but it's because TDM, in the state of Texas. Oversees a lot of the FEMA programs, but they're federal dollars through FEMA. They're the intermediary agency. Um, and so a lot of the programs that we do through TDM have to be submitted to, um, FEMA for approval. That's where a lot of things become hairy. Because if you're submitting a generator under a disaster declaration, uh, program that you're eligible for, like winter storms. When the winter storms came through back in twenty twenty-one, there was a disaster declaration. A lot of people submitted generators. They had to get the slow up, typically happens with FEMA. FEMA has to review all of that. They have to approve that the generator is an activity they're willing to fund. If they say no, then. They're, they're kind of stop all at there at that point, but. Um, Texas Department of Emergency Management will man it, will, I put building resilient infrastructure and communities, which is BRIC. There are multiple, however, under the hazard mitigation umbrella through FEMA that TDM manages. Brick is one of them. You can also apply for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Program. Then there's also the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant. Um, and then there's the Hazard Mitigation Plans. So that's a whole other side of it, is having a hazard mitigation plan, which you want to have. We have seen on the GLO side, when mitigation dollars come through, they'll say, do you have a hazard mitigation plan that's active and approved? And if you say yes, you get extra points on your comp, on your application. If you say no, you lose those, and sometimes it's enough to throw you out of the running altogether. So it's important to have a hazard mitigation plan in place. Um, under those programs, you can apply for any kind of, you know, street and drainage and infrastructure, so water systems. You can do, uh, I've seen people put in water towers. I've seen, and I've seen people put in, um, you know, anything that's mitigation, you could do. Communications, um, you could do safe rooms under those. There's a lot of stipulations with the safe rooms, but you can do safe rooms. I haven't seen a safe room for animals yet. But you can do safe rooms for humans. I'd have to look into it deeper for the, for the, for the animals. Um, a lot of times they won't outfit it, but they'll build you the structure on the safe rooms. So, but that is a, that is something you can do. Um, of course, there's wildfire mitigation, building code adoption, um, aqua for storage and recovery. Uh, does cover management costs, so that's not something that you would have to pay for any kind of administrative or engineering fees out of pocket. So it's a nice thing. The, the, the match can be a little higher cuz there's no LMI component. So a lot of times you're looking at a federal's cost share of seventy-five percent, which means your match contribution is typically about twenty-five percent. Based on your program, on that program, sometimes TDM can come back and it can be something more. There is, have y'all heard of the SB seven dollars that have come through, through TDM? It was a Senate bill that was passed. TDM has funding available. So what happens is when you apply for a TDM grant like BRIC, for example, if it gets funded. TDM will automatically apply SB seven funds to your match, and it'll reduce your, your portion of match. They don't tell you what it's gonna be upfront. I don't know what their math is for it, but they do apply some, so it reduces your, your burden. I don't know. It'll be there until funds are fully expended, so I don't know how much more is available. Um, that is a good thing. And we were talking about generators. That's what I wanted to tell y'all, is you can do generators, um, under some of these programs as well. They're typically due the end of December, even into January, so if you're, so those would be, and they're annual. So I don't want y'all to feel like you have to rush to it this year. It's pretty close, but if you wanna plan that out for next year, already have in mind. It'd be a good time to get things started, so you start building your plans for next year's application.
I got four sitting from the winter storm, and it still hasn't gone through. Been dealing with it since the winter storm.
The application.
They have the application. It's at TDM. It's been moved to FEMA, and we still do not have an answer back.
I understand. It's, it is difficult when it gets to that point, cuz there's not too much that we, that anybody can really. Move FEMA along. Uh, what we tend to do, at least at Grant Works, is our situation for pro, for, for procurement. You can umbrella all of the FEMA TDM grants into one procurement, and it can be good for up to five years, cuz it's typically two, two years with three single year. Um, renewals, you know, every year you can renew it, or extend it, and it'll be good for up to five years. You don't have to come back to court and do all of this. We do it for that reason, because let's say FEMA comes back and FEMA says, we're not gonna take the generator on this DR. We could turn around and resubmit the same generator request under one of these grant programs.
Well, I've got it under the winter storm and under COVID.
Okay.
They're, they're both, both of the grants are under winter storm, both of them are under COVID.
That'd be worth looking to see if it's something we wanna just turn around and submit under BRIC or something. That would be a conversation to have. So.
Yeah.
Um, but we can look into it, but that's, that's, any questions for TDM? Or?
We see them a lot. They come and talk to us pretty regularly, so.
Sure.
So.
Um, well, let's go ahead and go to Water Development Board again, and we're gonna, hey. Water Development Board is of course the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Um, the Rural Water Assistance, the SWIFT, um, and then they have the, uh. I don't see it on here. There's another one that's, that's missing. It's the FIF, it's the Flood Infrastructure Fund. And so that one is a little bit easier to me in at work with. People like to apply for that one a lot. Um, they're all infrastructure-related, all water-related. These have a lot of, these are a lot of loans. And so then you get tied into the loan component through Water Development Board. Have y'all done those already? Very familiar?
I've done them on the city side. Yeah, I think Water Development Board is not a fun.
I was just gonna say, it's not, it's, if you really need the support, it's great. The challenge is if you get involved with Water Development Board Fund that has a loan as a component. They will literally assign you a loan, um, like a loan officer. And they will say, this person is gonna walk you through all of the, of the loan side of things, and then they have to build up. I mean, they, it's like going to the bank and getting a loan, basically, a business loan. They're gonna basically do the same thing for you, and all that has to be covered through the grant. So you're gonna lose funds off of the top to pay for the, the loan assistance and the loan officer that TDWB requires you to carry with you. It's not bad, it, but it is an extra piece to deal with, and it can be cumbersome depending on, you know, what your need is. You may say it's not worth going through all that, so it's just something to be aware of, though. It is funding that is available, or what we, we can help manage and write those. They're typically not very challenging to write. A lot of engineers like to do that more than three years. It's a simple. Um, but where you get into the, the need is where management needs Davis Bacon. And so a lot of times engineers will call us, say, we don't wanna do Davis Bacon labor standards, so they'll, they'll call us and say, can you do the, the labor standards on these? So, but it is something we can look into, but again, it's based on your need. What is it, what is the project that you're looking at? Um, let's go to EA.
Blood insurance fund, those projects have to be, or on the best site for the, for your, for the flood plan.
The flood infrastructure. The flood infrastructure fund?
The fifth funds. They have to be like trendy river has the flood plain man, the groups that they have a list.
I don't know is the flood that through Water Development Board has to tie back to, you know, the program. It's not that. I would have to. It may. I just would have to go double check that. So it could. You're talking about the National Flood Insurance Program.
I'm talking about the, the, the each basin has a flood group.
Oh, yes. Yes.
They have a list of projects.
That's correct.
On that list, and I was looking for that fund.
That's correct.
So it's FYI for the group. We have projects on that list. It's in the plan. It's all that. We, we submitted them. They're on the list. It's just a matter of going in.
That's correct. Yes.
Are any of the flood programs, are those have forgivable loans or they all grant parts of it? No?
No, they just have reduced, um,
Participation.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Any other question?
No.
So EDA, um.
I don't like that word forgivable loans.
A lot of times they'll, they'll give you like a million dollar, I'm giving you a million dollar project loan. Your grant would be a hundred thousand dollars. And they'll grant you that hundred thousand dollars back if you, if you, in some of these other projects they have. Oh, yeah, it'd be pretty poor to get them, but they do do, look, water mill, they do those. They're just a bear to deal with regulatory wise.
Yeah.
So Economic Development Administration. So this one is really good for, can be good for infrastructure, can be good for a lot of things. Um, there is the E A A grant, which is the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. And then there is one that's a planning grant. What I like to tell people is the planning grant is very helpful if you're trying to build out an economic development strategic growth plan for your county or your community. It can be very helpful because you can sit down with your local stakeholders and identify where y'all gonna be in the next ten years, industry wise. Where is your, what is your economic uh, outlook for the entire county, including C? What is, what is the interest of businesses trying to come in? Texas is growing like, like crazy. We see industries coming in everywhere, all over the state by now. I know it's a totally different conversation, but anyway, you see all this stuff happening. Economic development plans are, are really something to consider, um, in my personal opinion. Just because of what we see happening and, and all the growth we see coming. Um, outside of a plan, you don't have to have a plan in place to be able to apply for the actual, the E A A grant, which is the construction grant. Um, these are really cool because if you have a business that it, first of all, it has to address an economic impact, right? So you've gotta show proof of the economic impact, gotta show proof that it's going to boost your local economy. Um, that's what that is. Yeah. Typically, it's tied to a company or a business trying to come into town. So you're either gonna create jobs, you're gonna retain jobs. So it's usually one or the other. Um, it's best to own the land. The match, uh, can be, uh, it's fifty fifty grant, grant rate. At the grant, your percentage can fluctuate depending on the distress in the community. Um, so there's a distress number that the, that the head will look at. Um, that's not something you can change or, or adjust. It just kinda is what it is. Um, so your your match might be less than fifty percent. Um, how can this be for infrastructure? Well, let's say you have a company that's trying to expand its services to increase capacity. Um, they want, they're gonna end up hiring more workers, but they need better access to infrastructure. They don't have enough water access. Or there's just, it's poor drainage. There could be multiple factors that are considering. Sometimes it's even electrical upgrades. We literally did an EDA grant and it got funded for business who need, who came into town, had a building. The whole thing needed to be, uh, redone, uh, electrically. Uh, so they applied for an economic development grant and it covered the cost of all of the electrical upgrades. So there's different ways you can look at this. Sometimes it's a way of getting infrastructure to an entire site if you're gonna build an industrial park. Um, so there's a lot of things you can do under economic development. It's really how you I don't wanna say sell it, but it's really how you present it, right? It's how you, it's how you think about it. Um, so this is a very, this is a very popular grant. Um, it's one that you have to start well in advance. So it's an annual grant. We know the E A A grant out every year. Uh, typically somewhere in the beginning to spring of the years, when they start announcing what the allocations are gonna be or, or what the fund, uh, is gonna be, how much, how many funds are available? But you have to get a lot of support from your local, from your regional office of the EDA. And that is what takes a great deal of time to accomplish. You have to also get letter support from your cog. Um, there's a lot of things you need to do. Checkbox you have to check. And so it's important if you're thinking of an economic development grant, that you start at least a year in advance, maybe even a year and a half. So you start having those conversations about what it's gonna take to get all the support you need to get it funded. Okay? And the reason is because the regional offices are the ones that pick those projects. They're the ones that choose which ones are gonna be submitted. So you really have to have that. You wanna make sure you get that regional office's support on your project. Okay? Any questions on economic development? Okay, let's talk about firefighter grants. Grant Works doesn't do a whole lot of firefighter grants only because they don't usually cover administration fees. And so it's not that we don't want to, it's that we just, we just can't. They don't, they don't cover us. Um, but it also doesn't mean we won't. A lot of our clients who have asked us to come and help them usually will do an hourly fee. Now, there's different ways we can structure it, just to help you guys. Um, if you need that kind of guidance or assistance, um, but, but we, I did wanna bring this to your attention so you're aware of them. There's assistance to firefighter grants. They're, the websites are listed on all of these. And it's in your pocket. So if you need to go look at them, you can. There's the A and M Forest Service, the Rural BFD Assistance Program, Helping Hands, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration's Rural Emergency Medical Services Training Grant. So this helps with the training for EMS personnel. Um, then there's the Homeland Security Program and Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. That's the Safer Grant. Um, and then there's another one too on the next page. There's two more. There you go. State Firefighters, Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal Association, Texas Fire Department, recruitment, volunteer emergency responders, uh, responders. Um, this is another foundation grant and then the Public Safety Foundation, Firehouse Subs. Um, they will help with the equipment and prevention education. So and this one's good with three equipment as well. We know they need a lot of that. If, and a lot of times, at least for Grant Works, if you call us and say, hey, we wanna ask questions about it, look at it. I'll look at it for you. We've done that for our clients. At no cost, we'll distribute it.
Right. I like that part.
And I figured you would. They're very simple.
See, you got my attention at no cost. Well, I hope so, that.
Any questions?
No, like. That was a lot.
I know it was. I, and I'm, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we give a good deal of information so you know what we're able to do.
Okay.
Um, I still think that it's best to sit with each of you and find out what your individual needs are. And then that would be how to best solve something for you.
All right.
So where, where we go from here, I guess?
Go back through it and look at all this stuff again.
Yeah, I want that. Yeah, the dark. We need to come up with a scope of work, right? Yeah, I mean. So those three projects, if we have four different roads, yeah, one project.
If you have three different roads and you wanna submit it as one, are they related to each other or are they scattered?
They're scattered.
Scattered.
They're all flooded?
Oh, yeah. We show flooding. Still problem there. Well, I can't. I'm about Joe.
We're all, we're only can turn in three projects.
You can only turn in three projects?
Right.
But they're listed as activities. So what's your activity? Know what I mean? Is it flood drainage? Is it road improvement?
Road improvements. That's one activity in a project.
That's right.
Yeah.
I can give like guidance. So.
If the fire stations are out, then we need to look at, I mean, uh.
So I have down roads, fire stations out with EMS in them, generators.
Generators was in, right?
Yes, if it's, it has to do, you have to demonstrate how it's tying back to one of those.
I think we look before they want electric bill records showing outages during the storm. Where, where, where's your power?
What is it supporting? You know, think about what is that generator going to support?
Warming stations, cooling stations.
And then what?
Open to the public buildings.
We usually use to demonstrate tieback is in the past, we've gone and gotten like weather reports because it'll show on the National Weather Service where areas have been. So you can use that. There's all kinds of things you can use to demonstrate. I've, I've scoured Facebook for citizen photos. It's a lot of times people will post pictures, you know, of votes.
Um. If that, if you do a project on that tower communications, a lady at the conference said that as long as communications is very raw. We can build a tower, we can do it. Only thing, but the only thing didn't qualify was hand held radios.
But you can do truck manner radios.
But you can do a truck manner radio. I would, I would assume that these fire departments haven't had new radios in a while. I don't remember the last grant we got.
It's an old question to ask.
That's a different activity.
Uh huh.
That's an activity, you know.
Yeah.
You got that down.
I got that down now.
I think, yeah.
Oh, that wasn't.
I don't know about hardbound though. I think they get a lot of hand helds in.
I don't remember. That's why.
I bet, I think they give us a list within this week.
Huh?
I bet they can give us a list within this week.
I can too.
Uh, I talked to Larry about windows and doors for the courthouse. I'm gonna say that activity doesn't qualify. Nope. Okay.
You didn't get a yes.
Right.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was.
We had talked about windows and doors for that, for the courthouse. Would that qualify as an activity?
I don't know how you would tie that.
I don't either, but we need them. Okay. Uh, we talked about Butcha and Office, like a command center for emergency management.
Uh, yeah, you can tie that back. Yeah. As long as it can be effectively tied back, you know what I mean? And justified, that's something. But then keep him on to the, um, twenty four months.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm just trying to get my list together. Okay. Y'all gonna come up with a list of roads?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure y'all can. I don't want verbal pay. We paving out a long one.
There are other funds for that stuff. So let's say it's not gonna need the twenty four month that you think, like that command center.
Yeah.
There's other things under T D M.
Yeah.
Cause all the roads have to be the LMI, right? Load of moderate income. Okay.
So you'll end up having to survey those. The twenty four month period begins when the GLO contract is initiated with us. So that's the good thing. They're not counting how long it takes you to write the application.
Yeah.
What else I got?
You can call me later.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Give it all today. So my cell phone number is on my business card, gentlemen, so you can text me.
What about community centers? Add into.
Retrofitting something or building something? Building something?
Can we do yours four H project? Because.
Thank you.
Know what you're talking about.
Like a, uh, a meeting room or shelter location with some T D M storage in it?
Yeah. Let me find out for you and then I will get back to you. Is that all right?
We have a little building with bathrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, what we're talking about now is that.
A meet hall.
Whatever acronym it is, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. So y'all, you'll get somebody to meet with everybody individually. Some of those global work, just stuff.
Don't text me, cause I don't get texts.
Yeah.
Don't call.
No texts.
Yeah.
Any other questions on Grant Works?
What you doing this evening?
All right. Go back to no executive session. Any public comments? Questions for media? Commissioners court. One thing I got with Commissioner's Court, do would y'all like to not have agenda items that don't have backup on Wednesdays?
That's me. That's another minute.
Nothing goes on the agenda if it doesn't have backup.
We gotta pay bills.
I know we'll do a little waiver. If it comes in before we email it out on Thursday.
But it does.
If it has, if it has backup by, by the time Ally sends it out, we'll put it on agenda. If it doesn't, we're not gonna put it on the agenda.
Well, some of that. Some of it doesn't require.
Right. And I get that.
We don't wanna back to something.
Tabs and the things.
Right.
And like the number on the backup, that agenda item.
Yeah.
That would be really nice when we're putting it like three, four pages.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm good with that.
All right.